Thank you, everyone, for attending today's special joint meeting of the San Bernardino County Board
Is that my turn?
Thank you. Thank you very much. There we go. Now, we're good. Again, thank you for being here today for the special joint meeting of the County Assembly of Board Supervisors, City Hall or City Council, San Juan Batista City Council, and Hazel Hawkins Board of Trustees, and San Bernardino County Office of Education, and all those members of the public who joined us today. I know we have some House rules that we'd like to discuss first. And one of them is that we're going to allow only a limit of 20 members of the public to join us, but there will be golden opportunity for the public to-
Josie Sanchez, Hazel Hawkins Hospital Board Member, President.
Thank you for joining us.
Could I have you mute your phone temporarily until we take roll call? Thank you.
Thank you again. We posted some notice out there that we're only going to allow 20 members of the public to join us in the public. However, there'll be other opportunities for the public to express their view to the board members through Zoom and through calling in and looking at Janet. And we'll make sure that we'll try to address all the questions and comments that will come in through technology. This is the first time we've actually done this, so we're going to go through some bumps on this. So bear with us. The main important thing is that we relay and we talk with the public about the coronavirus that is happening today. It is an ever-evolving situation, and more information will come out, and we'll try to provide more information as we can with the public. But today, it's more of a presentation and discuss among the board members and the rest of the community about the coronavirus. Just a little side note, everyone can do their part. The best way for all residents of San Bernardino County to reduce the risk of getting sick, as with seasonal cold or the flu, still apply to the coronavirus 19. Wash your hands with soap and water for at least 20 seconds. Cover your cough or sneeze. Stay at home if you're sick, and avoid touching your face. And at all possible, let's give the Obama shake instead of a handshake. I do appreciate that. So with that note, a call to order at 3:04. Can I have a pledge of allegiance? Supervisor Medina, will you lead us off, please?
Ready, set, go. Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America-
And to the republic which stands one nation, for God.
Under oath, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Could I have a acknowledged certificate of-
So move, Mr. Chair.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against motion- Motion carries. Thank you. This is a new one for us. Now, we'll do roll call. For the Board Supervisors, the Chair, I see the Vice Chair Kilios here, Supervisor Patelos here, and Supervisor Medina's here, and we have Supervisor Hernandez through-
Zoom.
Zoom.
Here.
Thank you, Supervisor Hernandez. Through the City Hallster, do I have the Hallster City Mayor onboard?
Is the mayor on the line?
Nope. Move on.
Mayor of the City of Hollister.
Okay, go.
Okay. Thank you.
Do we have Ronald, I mean Roland on the line?
I'm on the line, President.
Thank you. Honors Spencer's present, and Marty Richmond?
Present.
He's present.
Hi, Marty. Okay, so we do have a call from the City Hallster. Now, we go to the- Hold on a minute. I just got an email from the mayor saying it's not working.
Why don't somebody call him offline and try to figure it out?
Yeah. Okay, we'll address that issue as we're moving on. Now, can I have the-
But the people on the phone are suggesting you can't have three conversations going there at once.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Whoever has the floor, you've got to speak up.
Okay. So currently, the Board of Supervisors has the floor. If I can have everybody place your end on mute, and we will move forward with seeing San Juan Batista City Council. So is the mayor on?
I am.
Okay. Do we have the Vice Mayor Leslie Jordan on?
Present.
Do we have Dan DeRis on? Dan? Okay, Cesar Flores.
Present, right here.
Thank you. And do we have John Freeman on the line?
Yes, I'm here.
Thank you.
Excuse me, Madam Clerk, this is Dan DeRis. I had my phone on mute. I was trying to say I'm here. I'm here, so I am here.
Okay, thank you, Dan.
Sure.
Okay, so next, we'll move on to the Office of Education. I see Crystal present in the back. Next, we have Hazel Hawkins. Do we have Frankie Gallagher on the phone?
Yes, I'm here along with Ken Underwood, our CEO.
Perfect, so you're present through Zoom.
And this is Mary Louie as Hazel Hawkins.
Okay, Mary Louie.
Dr. Bogey from Hazel Hawkins.
Josie Sanchez, Board President, Hazel Hawkins.
Can you repeat that one more time?
Sure. Josie Sanchez, Board President, Hazel Hawkins.
Okay.
Jeanne Ferru, Anthony Mohica from Hazel Hawkins.
Okay.
Mary Louie, Board of Director, Hazel Hawkins.
And Ariel Hurtado also on the board, Board of Directors.
Angie Delacruz, Board of Directors, 55.
Okay. Is that everybody for Hazel Hawkins? Okay, thank you. Thank you. And if I can have everybody, please put your phones on mute. Hi, Maria. Can I please have you place your phone on mute?
Sure.
Okay, we'll take it back to the board, regular agenda.
I got a question for you. Actually, Marty did bring up an interesting question. How do we eliminate multi-conversations and then allow members of the City Council of Board Supervisors to speak? How are we going to handle that?
I would say we'll interact with whoever's president, and then we'll ask for each body-
Yes. Okay, then what we'll do is then we'll- Thank you, Mayor, for joining.
Thank you, Mayor, for joining us. Can I please have you place your line on mute?
Yeah.
Okay, so then we'll, in the interest of allowing everybody an opportunity to speak, what I'm going to do is I'm going to, we're going to allow the presentation to occur, allow the presentation to conclude, and then once it's concluded, I will ask the board members if they have any questions or comments. And after that, I will allow the City Council for the City Hallster, and then San Juan Batista, and then Hazel Hawkins, and then Crystal Lamontto. We'll do that. That'd be the best way. Okay, all right. Can I have the Mayor of San Juan Batista on the mic? Is she here, the mayor?
She's on the line.
Okay, ask her if she wants to say anything.
Mayor of San Juan Batista, before we begin, would you like to say a few words, Mary Vasquez?
No, I'm okay. I'm here to just kind of learn and get on board with everybody else. And Leslie has some questions that she'd like to ask regarding some of our business hours.
Okay, so Leslie will reserve her comments until the end.
Thank you. Mayor, City Hallster, you have any comments?
Mayor, City Hallister, before we begin, would you like to-
I'm right here. I just got online trying to hear where you guys are at.
We're about to begin, but before we begin, is there any comments?
No, I don't.
Okay.
I want to thank everybody for getting together, and we'll go from there as we start.
Sounds good. We'll reserve them for the end then. And then-
Hazel Hawkins.
Hazel Hawkins, before we begin, is there any comments? Chair, okay, we'll leave those to the end. And Office of Education, Crystal, do you have any comments before we begin?
No, outside of I just got off the phone with a conference call with the Governor's Office and the State Superintendent of Public Instruction, and additional instructions will be coming out for schools tomorrow. But that's all I'll say for now.
Thank you. Okay, let's move on. Yes.
Just real quick, I wanted to, we have a couple folks from school districts, and folks, just wanted to raise your hand if you represent a school district. Thank you all, and with the Chair's permission, if they would have an opportunity, I know they weren't noticed on this particular agenda, other than we wanted to make sure they were involved. If they can have an opportunity to talk as well after the meeting, thank you all for being here.
Thank you. I apologize for my short sinus on that.
I'm on, I'm on too, from the school district. Thanks Supervisor Medina.
That was actually Jim Kilios.
Okay, no problem. That sounds so professional.
The last message. Did we lose every minute?
Okay, all right. Regular agenda, update and discussion in regards to coronavirus 19, and provide direction. Right? One second? Okay, let's take a quick five seconds technical-
Somebody put us on hold. Can you just hang up if you can't join the call? Otherwise, it puts music on. Thank you, and I, thank you. Yes, go on mute, but do not answer other calls, or just hang up this line. Thank you. It's disruptive for everybody else on the line. Thank you.
Now, we can begin. Right?
All right, thank you, Mr. Chair. So I want to thank all the bodies today for spending some time with us. Obviously, this is an ever-moving-forward, you know, disease, coronavirus. And what I'd like to do is invite our Public Health Office, Tracy, the Director of our Health and Human Services Agency, up to present an update to your, to all your boards and councils to discuss this ever-changing disease, and how it is in our county currently, what we're working on, and what we're looking at in the future. So there's been a lot of work out of your office, out of Health and Human Services, with staff as well. And I think one of the things that we want to really try to glean from this is to have a unified message within our community. I think that's really the most important thing, and to make sure everybody's on the same page. That's, I think, the essence that we were looking for and really want to try to achieve today. So Tracy, Elton?
Thank you. Well, as you are all aware, this is ever-changing, minute, second by second. And so we appreciate you all being here. We just did a brief presentation to the board on Tuesday. Lynn Mello is our Public Health Director. She presented to the board on Tuesday an update. We're going to kind of revisit it a little bit, provide some updates on that. We don't have all the answers. I wish we did. We don't have the solutions, but we do know one thing. We all need to work together and not work against each other, because it just makes our jobs harder. We have been working diligently to ensure that our community is safe and healthy. As you're all aware, we have one active case in our county. Not very symptomatic, so we're glad he's doing well. And so that's important to remember throughout this presentation, throughout this day, and throughout the actions that we take. So just some brief slides here. What is the COVID-19? It's a new virus. It's also known as COVID-19. It hasn't been seen before 2019. Coronavirus is normally caused a common cold. This one is causing something a little bit more with respiratory illness. Now, by no means am I a doctor. There are, there is a doctor on the line, so if there's medical questions. Unfortunately, our Public Health Officer was not able to call in, but he can answer those questions as well. But I'm, I can't answer those questions. Lynn Mello is an RN, and she can answer any of those questions if anybody has questions regarding the medical side of this. A few facts about COVID-19. It impacts a variety of people. The most people at risk are the elderly, 65 and older, or somebody with a compromised immune system. Recent reports suggest that approximately 80% of the patients experience very mild symptoms and illness, and recover rather quickly. 95% of the patients recover fully from the illness. Symptoms, I know I sound like I have symptoms. I just have a cold. But cough, fever, and shortness of breath, I think shortness of breath is one of the biggest indicators of the difference. We have some different roles here at the county level. So Emergency Medical Services. Chris Magano is in the back. She represents that entity. I'm not going to read this. They just, their vital role in responding to requests for assistance, triaging patients, and providing emergency medical treatment and transport for ill persons. So when we worked on the previous two cases, they played a significant role in getting those patients transferred to UCSF for treatment. The functions of the Emergency Operations Center. So we currently do have an activated Level III Emergency Operations Centers. It's at the bottom of this slide. We meet currently twice a week. The EOC is the central command facility, and we're monitoring the situation. The duty officer, who is Chris or her designee, is monitoring the situation 24/7. However, the finance branch and operations branch is activated. And so we currently meet, I think today's Monday, Mondays and Thursdays, I think we're meeting. And so that's a very active, fluid conversation that we have regularly. This is just the role of public health, just so you understand what this division in our agency does. We serve, we work in partnership with the community to ensure optimal health and well-being of all people by preventing disease, injury, and disability, promoting physical and mental health, and protecting from health hazards. They've been working diligently around the clock to- Pardon?
We're meeting daily.
And we meet daily, but not only do we meet daily as a operations, they're working around the clock as well on this. So we do have a very active and current website that we encourage everybody to take a look at. All our press releases, health advisories are on the website. It also has questions, what if, if I am symptomatic, what should I do? On the website, we also have a case count. So we have how many cases we've had, and how many cases are recovered. There's been question about pending tests, results of pending tests. The complicated part about that is that there's numerous entities that test people in our county. They could be tested out of county, and so it's hard for us to track those numbers when we're trying to work to ensure safety. And so we are currently exploring how we can get that up on our page. Lynn is going to be working with her staff and our health officer to see if we can get that up. I know people want to know that, and so we're working hard to do that. There's been several requests from board members, from citizens, just to get that, and so we are working on that. We have a staffed team of nurses and a health officer who has over 30 years of experience from Santa Clara County. He was here on Tuesday at the board meeting. We're, utilization of the EOC and the Office of Emergency Services to send and receive messages to the state OES as we are required to do in a state of an emergency. We're mitigating with social distancing, as we are trying to do here, monitoring, quarantining, and isolating all on a voluntary basis. If points of distribution, which are also known as pods, are warranted for specimen collection and testing manpower and supplies will be requested through our EOC. There was recently, I'm sure many of you heard, an email that went out to students at Gablin Hills and the Dual Language Academy regarding the one case that tested positive in our county was a chaperone on the field trip. So they were all advised to self-monitor. Their period of isolation ends on Wednesday. So far, we haven't heard anybody that's symptomatic, so that's great news. This is just kind of the role of public health and how we work through the system. We showed this on Tuesday. The global situation, these are as current numbers as we could get. The cases are rising. We understand that. Fortunately, not so much here, and so we're hoping that it stays that way. Six deaths, including one non-California resident. Ages of all confirmed positive cases, zero to 17, six cases, 210 in the age group of 18 to 64, and 65-plus is 116. Yeah, these are just numbers that we pulled off the website. 11,700 plus or minus people who are self-monitoring who returned to the U.S. through San Francisco or LAX. So several people who've traveled are now being ordered to self-monitor at home. I know there are people here that are doing that as well. Forty-nine number of local health jurisdictions involved in self-monitoring, and 21 labs with test kits. There's been questions about test kits and availability in our community. At this point, it appears that we have a sufficient amount. Lynn could probably speak on that, or the hospital could as well, if there's questions regarding that. We are trying to have a strong partnership and collaboration amongst the healthcare and first responder community. We all meet regularly and email regularly, and so we're working hard to keep things together and solid and fluid. What's next? We need to work harder as a county to send a unified message. We have different messages being sent out by different people. I understand people are in a crisis, and they're not sure, and they're panicking. We're trying to minimize that. And so we, as leaders in this community, need to work hard to send this message and answer questions as diligently as we can. Minimize illness and prevent death, prevent transmission, keep healthcare workers well, and keep the healthcare system functioning. We need to empower our community, and prepare and provide guidance for all populations, families, faith-based health communities, schools, workplaces. And we have resources here on the PowerPoint, just with different places you can go to gather information. And, you know, we were really suggesting that when people feel that they're symptomatic, to go on our website, look at the guidance, call your health professional yourself. If you text COVID-19, slight error, there's not a dash in the 19 to 211211, excellent information there as well. And we appreciate 211. Thank you. And so that's our presentation. And if you have any other questions, we're here to attempt to answer them for you.
Okay, thank you, Tracy. Let me ask someone from Hazel Hawkins if they want to add any information to the presentation.
So if anybody from Hazel Hawkins-
Dr. Bogey here. What was the question?
If anybody from Hazel Hawkins has anything to add, any comments, any remarks?
Yeah, I'll add some. So I think the counties, I think overall, we're doing a great job. I think the citizens need to understand they've got to be active participants in this social distancing. And I hope everyone understands what flattening the curve is. Does everybody understand that? Or is there anybody that doesn't understand what that is?
Please explain it, sir.
Can you explain it?
Flattening the curve, if you imagine an X and Y graph on the X-axis, let's say vertical axis is number of COVID cases that we see, and then on the horizontal axis is the time since the first case hit us. If you imagine a curve, a line going up, if that line goes steeply up, the healthcare system will be overwhelmed very quickly. If we practice social distancing and all these protective measures that we're doing, we're hoping to lessen the angle of that curve and the height of that curve, so that the cases that we see, I think without a doubt, we're going to see more. But hopefully, over time, they come, and not as many. That allows the healthcare system and, you know, from all ends of it, from the ambulance system to the hospital, that allows us to sort of be able to deal with this, because if we get too many cases too fast, we're going to be overwhelmed, and we're going to shut down. That's the issue. So flattening the curve means lessening the number of cases in a short amount of time, and overall, reducing the amount of severe cases that we see. Does that make sense?
Yes.
So all of these measures that we're putting into place, screening people, telling people to stay home, this is all to help flatten that curve, so that we can make sure this thing doesn't explode in our county, and we end up with a number of deaths that were unnecessary and overwhelming our healthcare system. So so far, I think we're doing well. And if anybody's got any comments or questions, I think we're, I'd like to open that up now, questions, because I have to run pretty quick here. So if anybody's got any questions for me, I'll take them now.
Hey, Dr. Bogey. It's Dr. Hurtado. I have a question for you.
Hold on, hold on, Dr. Hurtado. Hold on. Hold on. I got Lenord first. Lenord?
Yes, Carol Lenore, City of Hollister, have a question for you, Dr. Bogey. So if we do have that high spike in the patients, is this, do Hazel Hawkins ever have discussions about having retired physicians and nurse personnel come on back, whether it's a little bit of pay or voluntarily? Is that a resource you can pull from?
I think we're, we had a meeting this morning. I think everything is open right now as far as dealing with the surge. And this is something we've never seen before, so we're trying to be as flexible and fluid as possible. So I think everything is on the table, and a lot of rules are off the table. So I think in short, the answer is yes. We would definitely consider it. And the long answer is, we don't know if it would work or not. We have never experienced it before.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Hurtado?
Yeah, Dr. Bogey, I have a question for you. So, and this is kind of related to-
And can you state what your name is, please?
This is, this is Dr. Hurtado. I'm on the district board for the hospital. And I want to leave it, I want to leave this question more to Dr. Bogey, even though I want to know the answer here. Can you comment on the availability of ventilators and ICU beds, and the fact that we're currently in the identification phase? And what happens if we need to go into the treatment phase as the number of cases multiply in the county, and it's not available, or not an option to transport people up to the area anymore? I'm going to go ahead and mute after this.
Sure. We discussed that this morning, and I think we were planning for that. We've got six ventilators in the hospital. Those can be modified to treat at least two patients at once, if not four patients at once. We have negative pressure rooms kind of throughout the hospital. We've got plenty of beds. We're going to move out. We have a, currently, we've got a situation where we've got a lot of skilled nursing patients inside the hospital. They're moving out to make room for the future. So I, let me go back. So transferring patients out that have this, I don't think it's going to be an option. Originally, a month or so ago, we had two patients in this county, and we worked hard, and we found a place for them to go. It took a lot of effort for that to happen. I think in today's world, we're not going to be able to transfer anybody. We're going to be caring for these patients. The new thing is that this is a droplet, meaning that they don't necessarily have to be in negative pressure rooms. So, you know, we've got, like I said, six ventilators. We've got some emergency ventilator capability that we could use as well if we got into it. So six times two is 12, and multiplied by six times four, possibly, if we needed to. We could cohort these patients together in certain parts of the hospital, and so there's- And so there's, there's different discussions going on, and I think we're going to see the real sick patients coming in the next month or two if we keep this curve flattened.
It's going on right now.
Right now, we do not have any...
Actually, hold on a minute. Hold on a minute. Everyone, please hold.
Can I have everybody place on mute and before you speak, or let's have the doctor finish up the comment before any new comments.
And then that person who says a comment, please say your name.
Yeah, we need you to state your name before you speak as well. Thank you.
Let me ask, is that, Dr. Hurtado, does that kind of answer the question?
Yes, it does. It does.
I'll add to that, that we have taken protective measures so that when patients are on ventilators, there's a HEPA filter on that ventilator so that we're not risking healthcare providers. And I think somebody else asked a question as well.
Okay, thank you. Was there someone else that asked a question?
I had a, Marty Richmond, I had a question.
Go ahead, Marty.
Yeah, I happened to be unfortunately admitted here at Sleet Valley Memorial for a different purpose than something new with the coronavirus. But while I'm here, I noticed they've already deployed their emergency tents and so on and so forth. So if they, if they, if they need space in a hurry, it's already available and up. I don't know if that's available to us. I don't know if, what our plans are about getting them ready to deploy or have we put them up. I can't see them all the way over here in Salina. Whatever, I just want to get an update on it. Thank you.
All right, I'll answer that. So we're ahead of the game. We've already had the tent up for a couple weeks. We've been using it. We have three tents total at Hazel Hawkins, so we've got that.
Okay, that's the answer. Thank you. You sent me over here, so I can't see what's going on over there.
We also have had, we've done drive-through testing for patients that meet the current requirements for testing. So we've been doing this already for about a week and a half, and we're ahead of the game. Our county is cutting edge, so you can be proud of that.
All right, thank you very much.
I'm glad, I'm glad you're ahead of the game, and thanks for the good treatment you gave me when I was there.
Thank you, Marty, for your question. Supervisor Gillio?
Yeah, quickly for, for Dr. Bogie, because I know you're going to be off the line here. This, I was going to bring this up later with our team. This is Jim Gillio, County Supervisor, District Four. One of the things that we've experienced at the county level from talking to our admin department and several departments is we're having trouble getting ahold of sanitizer, soap, all the different things we need to keep our, our team members safe. Do you have any suggestions about how we could all work together, maybe through one of your networks, to make sure that our, our county team has those supplies? Or if you're short, how are you getting the supplies and is there any chance to work together? Thank you.
Huge issue for us, protective, personal protective equipment. We currently are okay, but we are going to run out here, you know, if things continue on, which I think they will. We need to conserve, use it very wisely. If you don't need it, don't use it. I don't know what to tell you about the supply chain. We've, we've had roadblocks left and right trying to get more PPE, personal protective equipment. So my, my suggestion to everybody is use it wisely, and if you can reuse anything that's safe to reuse, reuse it. So at the time, I'm not sure how to answer that. If I have a couple of colleagues that are up in Washington, I've heard from them, and one of the first things they told me was watch out for your PPE, your personal protective equipment, because you're going to run out. So that's, that's an issue that I think this whole nation is going to be facing pretty soon.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to poll everyone, see if they have any questions before you leave. Supervisor Patelot?
I have no question.
Supervisor Medina?
Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Ignacio Velazquez?
Thank you, Supervisor. Dr. Bogie, I just wanted to say thank you for the information you provided, and I think you are 100% right as far as flattening the curve is essential, key to what's going to happen here. And I can't thank you enough for being ahead of the game here on the equipment and being ready for us all. So thank you very much.
Well, thanks, thanks, guys. I love this community, so I think the flattening of the curve is, is the message that I hope the citizens can understand. So that's the, I've put out a press release, we're trying to really hard to work with county public health and get this message out, that people can socially distance themselves, they can help out this whole, that's what all this president's doing, that's what all this is about. It's about trying to flatten that curve so we don't get overrun. So anyway, thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
Thank you.
Councilmember Spencer?
No.
No questions? Councilmember Rosendus?
No questions, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. Officer Education Crystal Lamontal?
Yeah. Just a couple updates from Friday.
I'm sorry, Crystal, can you, only if you have questions for the doctor.
Okay, never mind.
Thank you.
That will be offline.
Thank you. Mayor of City of San Juan Batista?
I don't have anything. My questions were answered, so I don't need to reiterate what has already gone over.
Thank you.
Thank you for Dr. Bogie.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Leslie Jordan?
No questions.
Thank you. Councilmember Dan DeRees?
Conference call in Hollister. I have a project.
Yes, Supervisor Dana Cruz, just a couple follow-ups for Dr. Bogie. I think I may have missed the number of beds that the hospital has a capacity for or in tents and so forth. Just what's the general understanding of what the capacity of Hazel Hawkins is? And then the follow-up to that question is, if we run out of ventilators, do we have access to others nearby?
I'm going to answer the last question first. Do we have access to other ventilators? We don't know, because we don't know what everybody else is going to be inundated with. And then as far as actual numbers of beds, I think our CEO, Ken Underwood, is on the line. I'm going to let him answer that, because I actually don't know the number of beds that we have.
Okay.
But we do have three large tents. So we've got the whole hospital plus these three surge tents that we really could handle quite a few patients, but I'll let Ken Underwood answer that question.
Okay. Executive Director Ken Underwood, you want a response to that question?
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Dr. Bogie. The, the hospital has the opportunity with ventilators, and we are researching to acquire more ventilators. But as far as the number of beds that we have available in the hospital, as of Thursday of this week, we will have acute beds that are currently occupied by skilled nursing residents. Those residents will be moving back to the skilled nursing facility across the street north side on Thursday and Friday. So we will have that wing of the hospital, which is the old obstetrics wing, available. And the beds that we would have available for patients would be between fifteen and twenty-five beds in that area.
Thank you. Mr. Ken Underwood?
So the total number of beds would be, what would they be, Ken?
I think the question was what, I mean, as far as the capacity that we have for coronavirus patients, that would be the excess beds that we, that were, that are currently not occupied that we would have.
I wonder that.
Actually, I've got a question for Ken Underwood. Is there any possibility where you could designate a certain number of beds just in case, or it's more as-you-go kind of process?
Again, that would be a response that we would, you know, work internally with the Traditionally, those beds will not, not be occupied. So even in a, in a high flu season, we will still have excess capacity in the fifteen-bed range. So that's why I'm saying we would, we would have the opportunity for fifteen to twenty-five beds if we had to have them.
Okay.
I think Dr. Bogie also may, he did not mention that I believe, as we speak, we have tested thirty-five residents for the coronavirus, and we have had the one come back positive of the, of the thirty-five tests that we have completed.
Thank you, Mr. Ken Underwood. Is it pertaining to the doctor or Ken Underwood?
I'm Dr. Bogie.
Okay. Actually, hold on, Marty. Councilmember of San Juan Batista, John Freeman?
No comment this time.
Thank you.
No questions.
Okay, thank you. Hazel Hawkins Director, Chairperson, Josie Sanchez? Okay. Trustee Casillas?
No question.
Thank you. Trustee Hernandez? No questions?
No questions. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. And then Trustee Delacruz? No question. Thank you. Supervisor Medina?
Yes, I have a quick question dealing with the amount of kits we have on hand, and if so, can we prioritize them for staff parents that were exposed at that certain school?
I missed, that was, how many test kits we have on hand? And what was the second part?
Second one is people that were exposed to the possible individual that was exposed in that certain school. Is there a way we can have these staff parents tested?
And if they don't have symptoms, so here's the other issue with just testing everybody. We would love to. If we just test everybody, there's only so many machines that can run these tests per hour. So if we send over two-hundred in a day, we're not going to get results for a week.
Perfect. That's what I wanted to hear.
So, so we've got this criteria that we're currently using. Until, until the system figures out how to test thousands of people at once in a community, we have to sort of, you know, use a criteria. Do they meet a criteria to be screened? And if they do, we're more than happy to do it. I wish we could test the whole town, but unfortunately, it's just not set up that way.
And when you're speaking of that, you're speaking of the automated system versus a manual system? The manual system can test how many people per day approximately?
Well, you know, I don't know that there's, that we know that yet. We haven't reached that, reached that critical mass. Now, an automated system, I don't know what you mean by that.
There were some studies done of automating a system that would be able to do tenfold the time that we do it manually, the way we do it now?
I can tell you this, we have to, somebody has to, has to stick a Q-tip in your nose, that's pretty manual.
Okay.
So, and then you've got to take that, you've got to put it in a jar. Everything has to be, you have to be dressed up in protective equipment to do that. It's a time-consuming process. Each of those has to be labeled, they've got to be specially handled, so there's a whole process to be...
So how many can we do in a day here in Hollister or San Benito County?
Right now, we're sort of maxing at it about ten to fifteen.
Thank you.
Reasonably. Otherwise, we don't have the staff to do it. We just can't sit out there all day long and do it.
Understood. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Anyone else from the school community wants to ask some questions to the doctor? None? Okay. All right. Right, does that conclude your guys' report?
We were going to allow, I think, the schools to come up as well to, this is for item number one.
Correct.
Is that what you're referring to?
That's right, yes.
Yeah, and, and the other jurisdictions, if they wanted to discuss anything with that, that was what we have on the table.
Yeah, that's why I invited them, if they wanted to speak.
Mr. Chair, may I suggest, if you don't mind, that we, with your permission, that we cut Dr. Bogie loose so he can get back to treating people?
I'll also do that right now.
Thanks.
Okay, all right. Doctor, thank you.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you, Dr. Bogie. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, Crystal, you want to shed some input with the board?
Sure.
In the community?
Just a few things that are different than Friday. As I articulated right before this meeting, I was afraid I was going to be a little bit late. There was a conference call with all county superintendents across the state of California with the governor's office. It wasn't the governor himself, it was a representation, several, his deputy, and then the California Department of Education. Prior to the conference call today, they asked that we submit any questions that we have with concerns within education, with school closures, with average daily attendance, all of the moving parts that our districts and our county offices are dealing with. I reached out to all of my district superintendents. We had a list of about probably eighteen questions that we submitted in advance. Today, they did not go over all the questions. Basically, they took that as input and allowed us to add any additional questions. From what I understand, tomorrow, there will be additional guidance for districts that will come from both the governor and the California Department of Education together. Tomorrow morning, we will be engaging in another conference call with all of our district superintendents. As you know, this week, our schools are closed at this point. The conversation tomorrow will be, what does that look like in the upcoming weeks, including distance learning? How do we continue to engage our students so they receive a valuable education during this time? And so tomorrow, not Wednesday, originally it was going to be Wednesday, we've changed the timeline with all of the moving parts. We will have a conference call tomorrow with further information on our next steps with San Antonio County and with our districts.
Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you, Superintendent. Okay, this is an opportunity for the board and the councils, if they wish to provide, give direction. I'm going to start first with Supervisor Patelot. Do you want to provide some direction on the subject matter?
I guess. I want to thank our health professionals for the hard work. It's been ongoing, non-stop, and, and one of the things, just seeing kind of what's happening in our, in our nation and throughout the whole world for that matter, people are really, really concerned about this. But I think we're getting some real good guidance from our professionals as far as what we could do all individually. And that's to keep the vast majority of us safe, and I think we have to be diligent. Oh, sorry about that. I can't find a normal ringer, but anyhow, new phone. Getting back to the guidance that the health officials throughout the whole nation is giving us, I think we've got to follow those to the best of our ability. Us as elected leaders need to kind of stay in line and follow our, our training as far as letting our professional people guide us as far as when decisions need to be made. And it's easy to jump out in front, as I think some of us have, but we have to come back. And in order to best serve the public, best, you know, protect ourselves, we have to follow our professional health staff in this crisis. And that's kind of what I want to kind of bring us all around to thinking. You know, seeing the fire department chief here, if there was a building on fire, we're not going to go and tell them how to put out that fire. We're depend on the fire department to put out that fire. And that's what we have right now, is a health crisis, and we're have to depend on our health experts to give us the best course of action and not get out in front of them. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, Mayor for City of San Juan Batista?
Yes.
Do you want to provide some direction, some input on what the next steps we should do?
Do you want to provide some input on to, on direction on, on how to address the issue?
You know, we're just, we're following protocol, what we've been, we've been following all of the guidelines, and that's basically what we've been doing here in San Juan Batista.
Thank you. Thank you. City Hollister Mayor?
Thank you, Chairman. You know, I wanted to go back to some comments about how we're going to move forward. I think we've been very aggressive in the city of Hollister on this issue. Dr. Bogie kind of pointed out, if we don't flatten the curve, we're going to have some issues. We only have six ventilators maybe that can double. This is not a time to be waiting. You know, one of the things I'd be happy to see happen is no more cases come forward. But if we do not move aggressively on slowing this down, we're going to see more cases, and we all know that, and we're going to be overwhelmed. You know, there are going to be people upset, I get it, about moving towards closing these things or moving towards the shelter in place. Our local or our partners in the Bay Area have made a decision as of today to go towards shelter in place. I've been receiving phone calls all day about what those employees that live here, that travel up there, are going to do during the day. So we have to understand what they're doing, be in line with them as quickly as possible, or we're going to face the consequences. We need to understand, this is not a time to wait and seek. This is a time to get ahead, be aggressive, and hope, and hope no more cases pop up. If we get overwhelmed here, we will never catch up. I want to make sure everyone understands that, because we are an island in our community. So what I'd like to see happen is work with the mayor of San Juan Batista, their city manager, the chair of your board, superintendent of schools, and somebody from the hospital. Maybe we could have daily phone conferences and understand what's going on and make sure we're, we are working together to stay ahead of this. But this is not the time to blink, people. We need to really be aggressive on this. I don't want to be in a situation where we're struggling to keep up, and the question is why we didn't do it. I want to be in a situation where people are saying, ah, ha, 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 you guys move so quick and nothing ever happens. That is the best thing I could ever hear. And that's what we, that should be the goal from all of us. But, Mr. Chair, if you can arrange something like that, that would be great.
Thank you. I would take it advice with the board, but right now, I'm just hearing for inputs on directions. Thank you. All right. Madam Chair, Josie from Hazel Hawkins?
Chair from Hazel Hawkins?
Josie?
Hi. This is Dr. Ortado. I just wanted to echo what he said and the previous speakers just said. We are in an island, because there's no way out. We're kind of at the end of the road. All roads come to Hollister, nothing, nothing can leave. So we're kind of stuck, and we have limited capacity on ICU beds. So we, like you said, we have to be aggressive, just because we don't have the resources to deal with an all-out pandemic. So if you get more than six people on a ventilator, we have some options in terms of digging up operating room ventilators and things like that. I mean, we really have to be aggressive to make sure it doesn't spread, because it will easily overrun us. Thank you, everyone, for coming in on this call.
Thank you, Ortado. Supervisor Gilio?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, I wanted to thank you for convening in this meeting, and I want to thank all the members of all the different agencies, as well as the members of the public that are here interested, and our law enforcement partners. Candace Hooper, our DA is here. I really appreciate you all being here. Thank you, Fire, everybody, for being here. So a couple of things that I'd like to discuss, and maybe we can put it on the list and get an answer to, is specifically the shelter in place order that we're hearing from Santa Clara County. There was a lot of confusion yesterday with the governor's press release, and then we had a, we had a call also with the governor's secretary that's in charge of all this stuff here, their second-in-command, and they assured us that at the time, it was not a order, it was a guideline, all the different things about elderly folks not being able to leave the house and the different restrictions. So we need to maybe hear after everybody's done commenting from our health department on what are their thoughts on shelter in place, and what would trigger something like that in our county, in our area? And I'd like to hear that. At the appropriate time, perhaps on item number two, I'm prepared to ask our board for the support for a temporary PIO to hire to deal with this specifically, that would handle unified messaging specifically, that would be able to contact both cities, the hospital, the school districts, and would handle a unified message that us elected people could then share, so there's not a, maybe four different messages going out from different organizations. I think it's confusing the community a little bit, and I think honestly, that's our fault. And I think we as elected people need to do better at that. Somebody, I think Supervisor Patelot had mentioned that. We can't get, can't get ahead of our experts. We've got to let them display the message, and then we can echo it out to the community. And then also, I'd like to discuss emergency funds for supplies, especially for our cities, our city partners, our county team members. And we can either, perhaps, I know we're going into a closed session later, we can discuss what we're going to do with our county team members there, if it's not appropriate to do it here. But we need to come up with some plans there, and those are the things that I'd like to get some answers to today. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Typically, I don't, I won't do this. I usually allow everyone to speak, but in this case, I'm going to respond to your question. I'm going to call for an emergency closed session item after we conclude this, maybe for the purposes of discussing cost allocations and asset allocation.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Okay, let's continue. City Council, Mr. Roland Resendez?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to echo a lot of the same sentiments that my colleagues are echoing first. I'd like to thank everybody for willing to come together and the public for being involved in the process. Thank you to all the experts that have provided such diligent information to us. I think that at this time, we, I am on board with putting together a unified message as well. I am also a little bit more cautious about how quickly we should react, because I think that we all took an oath to protect the Constitution against foreign and domestic enemies. And this is moving so quickly here that we need to stay on top of it. People are desperate for information. They're looking at us for leadership. We need to lead by example. We need to get together, act quickly, aggressively, and not let this get ahead of us. So I agree with what the experts are saying as well. Thank you so much for your time, Chair.
Thank you very much. City Hollister Vice Mayor? I'm sorry, City Hollister, City of San Juan Batista Vice Mayor?
A quick question. I just saw across my phone that the city of Hollister is to issue a shelter in place. Keeping this going on continuously, conversations with everybody so that we're all on the same page is helpful. We're in communication with our hospitality folks in San Juan Batista. We're a small city. We just want to make sure that we continue to thrive in this crisis. So we're working closely with them as well.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Anyone from the Hazel Hawkins Board of Trustees? Ms. Casillas?
I'd just like to echo that having a standard message for this county of San Benito with everybody involved would be a great thing for our community. And just really looking at the CDC and the requirements coming down from, I know it's confusing, but Dr. Bogie is so on top of everything, and just going with his advice, I think, is very important.
Thank you. Supervisor Mark Medina?
Looking at Supervisor Gilio and Supervisor Patelot, they pretty much said the same thing I was saying. Just want to thank everybody for everything they've done. Want to make sure that we understand that there's professionals out there, and those are the ones that we need to listen to. We need to follow their expertise. They train for this. They understand what is happening. So I want to make sure we as leaders, we look at them for the answers, and we don't use this as a political ploy or anything similar to that. So thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Medina, Councilmember Lenore?
Yes, please. Carol Lenore, District One, City of Hollister. I just want to assure the citizens of Hollister that we will be working together to come to a decision for possible future shelter in place. I will also ask the city manager to schedule a closed session so that the five members of the city council can discuss this, which could have a lot of repercussions. And I do want to stop the curve from going up, but also, I want to make sure we make a good decision. We have a lot of commuters that depend on work. But it stands to reason, if they're going to close Santa Clara County down, then we're going to have to also address our wide commuter base that goes there. But I would like to have further discussion with the entire city council before we call for a shelter in place. Thank you very much.
Thank you. City of San Juan Batista Councilmember Dan Deris?
Yes, thank you, Chairman Delacruz. I had a kind of practical question, which pertains to our restaurants and bars, both the city of Hollister, city of San Juan Batista, and the county. As we've seen, Governor Newsom has issued what I think are only directives at this point, not an order. They're not like the blogs, you know, Garchetti in LA and Governor Cuomo. But as we know, those mayors and about ten other states as of today have issued orders to have restaurants be takeout only and all bars closed. And I'd like to hear from the cities and the board as to what they think of those orders, or if Newsom orders something like that tonight, do we just all comply with that? How does the relationship between the county and the cities work with the governor's office?
Thank you. Actually, hold on, Lenore. A councilmember, Honor Spencer?
I'm just going to say, everybody has said exactly what I wanted to say. We need to work together. We need, we need to have one message, and it has to be agreed upon from all of us. We cannot have people out there putting out other messages. And I also want to just say, bars are non-essential as far as closing down, but I'm on board with everybody, and we just need to have the health department. They're doing a great job. San Benito County is doing a great job, and we need to stick with them.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Anyone else from the Hazel Hawkins Board of Trustees?
Just to repeat the question, any of the Hazel Hawkins staff, do you want to make any recommendations?
None. Okay, thank you. San Juan Batista City Councilmember John Freeman?
I just wanted to reiterate that we, six counties in the Bay Area installed a shelter in place order for all non-essential businesses, and I was seriously considering that really quickly.
Thank you. Supervisor Peter Hernandez?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yes, I definitely wanted to echo the sentiments, thanking the public health officer and ultimately the team that's behind trying to protect our community from spreading this disease. I just had some questions as far as the implementation of that shelter process. I'd like to know what that means to the local businesses. I, you know, I mean, I think it's, obviously, we've got to do what's necessary to mitigate that and to minimize that curve. I'm just curious, how do we create, to a certain extent, the response that we would really want, right? It's one thing to make an order, it's another thing to see if the committee even understands what that means and how it's going to apply, and ultimately, how their lives are going to change. You know, if there's, I think there should be, to a certain extent, a lot more of a conversation about due diligence with clarifying the impacts and understanding the outcomes from that decision, and to a certain extent, even creating a support system for those businesses or for the community, right? Because we don't want to bankrupt our community, depending on the delay, you know, the amount of time that this is going to take to change. So I just, I would like to have a little bit more of a further conversation about what that means. And then, a little bit to echo, definitely, beginning with what Supervisor Patelot had mentioned, is the whole sentiment of this whole meeting, the intent, was to kind of create a healthy conversation about how to unify a message and have a message that really relates to all different elements of our community, from, obviously, the health element, which is number one, and then from there, the industries in our community are going to be impacted, the residents, you know, if there's a way to create, you know, the schools and the shutdown and all the events that are not going to happen, how do we create one unified message that gives not only a one-stop-shop resource to be able to filter this information? And to a certain extent, the bigger picture, I would imagine, the goal would be, is that now everybody's on board with that message. That means that everybody's also on board with sharing that message, so it eliminates the possibility of confusion in the public, because that's what's basically happening, is people are coming up with their own, basically, when the county doesn't speak or the city doesn't speak in a unified messenger, all the different agencies, the public will speak on their own, which, you know, we've already had to deal with situations where things are not true. There's things that are not true being said, and then we're having to deal with basically, not trying to overwhelm the system by basically panic. It really is, to a certain extent, should have, could have been dealt with ahead of time, with trying to clarify the message. So whatever that means, that's what I, that's the whole point of this, and that's why I truly support it. But I think we really need to do a whole lot more diligence about the impacts and the supports to our community that they need, not, you know, not just say, stop doing business. What are we going to do to mitigate the impacts of that?
Thank you. I have asked every elected official in this room today to ask for input. Let me see, any other elected officials out there that I might have missed?
School board?
School board members? Mr. Bransky? I got you, Lenore. I know you have a question.
So...
You want to come to the podium?
I'm good. I'm good, James.
Good? Okay.
No, because we have a quorum of the Hollister School Board here, I'm going to save my comments that are related to it, except to say that we have a special board meeting tomorrow at four o'clock to discuss this. That was number one. Number two is, I want to echo Supervisor Hernandez's comments. Before we do a whole, what is it?
Shelter in place.
Exactly. That we do take the financial ramifications in, because it's great, I understand why we are, why you are making, possibly making, these decisions, but the ramifications to businesses and individuals just seems, it's going to be huge. And related to that is, how is this really going to be enforced? I mean, is it something that's just going to sound nice, or is it something that you're going to have police officers out there asking for papers, that are you going to a doctor's appointment, or are you going to get just a day's worth of groceries or whatever? So I realize what the political will of the people is and things like that, but we are an island here in San Benito County, and we can do things better than maybe our bigger brothers and sisters out there. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. I'm going to open up to the public. Anyone from the public?
Yes, hello, I'd like to speak.
I'm sorry, state your name.
Yeah, my name is Nick Wicker. I'm the general manager of Hardina, Deacon Juan, and San Juan Batista.
Welcome aboard.
Today, at two-thirty, we closed our doors. We wanted to be proactive and not reactive when it comes to this situation. And I understand the financial ramifications of a shelter in place and how that can definitely affect our society here, and we are an island out here. And we really need to be careful that we don't spread this, because we're talking about people losing their lives here. So we decided, as a whole here, as a management team, that, you know, we have any employees, that's any families, and it's going to be rough, and it's going to be tough, and we're going to do whatever we can to help them out, whether it be rations, or rice, and beans, and things like that, that we have here at the restaurant, that we can order through our fires. But then we try to nip this thing in the bud as quickly as we possibly can, because this is a very serious matter. And the six counties around us have shelter in place, and if, you know, we're up to me, I think that we should be doing the same.
Thank you for your input. Anyone else from the public?
Hello, yes, this is Francis Harris. I am a member of the hospitality community of San Juan Batista, and... I am a member of the hospitality community in San Juan Batista, and the food and beverage is being provided very strict, uh, at the conference already. We've all been doing that. We're hoping that, again, we will do whatever our town decides for us, but we are hoping to exercise our rights and our privilege for the off sale package here online, where we do, where we go, just like the restaurants are doing currently. We're hoping we retain that, but again, we'll support whatever our city is telling us, and it's, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public?
Yes, hello, my name is Anna Velasquez, and I'm district director for Senator Ana Callejero. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Thank you. I just want to, I just want to thank you for putting this call together, and I just also want to notify everyone that our office is here as a resource as well, but please keep us in the loop in regards to scheduled conference calls or meetings that we can be of assistance to gather information, and also if there's any issues or comments or questions that you may have that we can assist with through our, our local, uh, different representatives, please let us know. We are available, and we are here to support all the efforts that the cities are doing. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public?
Um, yes, I'd like to ask a question.
Yes, madam.
Is that okay?
Yes.
My name is Oscar Stephen, and I have a contract with San Bernardino County and do a facility meeting and do some other things for them, specifically with the child welfare, and primarily with child welfare, but also probation. So I was just curious if there was any guidance about some of the gatherings that they have? So, for example, we do family meetings, we also have, obviously, staff meetings and everything like that. Just wondering if there's any guidance for the agencies in the county that are working with the public, like social service agencies and the other agencies that have a lot of different community people coming in and family members coming in? Is there any guidance around those kinds of meetings that are maybe not considered emergency or essential, but they're obviously meeting a need, but it's not maybe an emergency? I just wondered if there's any guidance for them?
Actually, hold on. Hold on a minute. We will answer that question as soon as we close session. Thank you. Anyone else from the public? None? Carrie, you want to?
Sure. Thank you.
Yes. Sure.
Please first? No, absolutely not. My mommy always said...
Thank you.
All right, I was about to, I was about to make a statement.
Well, hold on, can you, we have...
No, Tulsa, let the public speak first. Go ahead. Elia can wait.
Can you go ahead and state your name before the question or comment? Go ahead. On the conference call? It's on mute, and we can't hear anything.
Hi, this is Kevin Barcelos. I have a dog, sorry. Um, there's a lot, there's a lot of, um, obviously, there's a lot of emotions going on, especially on the Facebook group, and I thought I would just, um, just kind of erase something that I posted a little bit ago on the various groups. Okay?
Go ahead. Yes.
So basically, my message is, I know you're really going over this, wondering how you're going to, you or your business are going to get through this financially. We all hope the state and federal government step in to help. Until they do, be rightfully worried and possibly angry over something that looks very premature. Those of us following this pandemic know that every country that hesitated to take this kind of action for fear of the economic impact, within days found that hesitation cost lives, and they had to end up doing it with actions anyway. When something is growing exponentially, and this virus doubles its infections every three to five days, every single day counts, which is 100% the right thing to do, to understand that. Finally, from every community that has dealt with the virus, it's the frontline healthcare workers, EMT and fire department personnel who are bearing the biggest burden. Already, our neighbors to the north, have multiple healthcare workers heading for their lives after being affected on the job, and we owe it to those personnel here who are part to reduce that burden. Can't do it without them, and they cannot do this without you. I very much support a shelter in place for the entire county. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else on the line that would like to make a comment?
You know what? This is Mayor Vasquez Edg. Can you hear me?
Yes.
What's your name?
I just have one question. I'm wondering if our health officials, and maybe, I don't know, Dr. Bogey, are there going to be guidelines and posted so that everybody is on the same page? So all of us here have something to go by? A roadmap?
We will respond, we will respond to your question after we close, after we close the public session.
So we're going to have public comments, so we're taking in any additional public comments?
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you were asking for other questions.
No, no, no.
Sorry, I'll go back, I'll go back on mute.
All right, thank you. Okay. That's my favorite.
Any other public comments on the line?
None. Okay. Elia, you want to?
Thank you. So in order to curb the curve, obviously, I think we're all heading towards the same idea about putting ourselves, and I commend San Juan Batista's Jardines to go ahead and be proactive instead of reactive. And like Kevin Barcelo said on earlier, I think that, I mean, just look at our current administration, it went from saying it was hoax to now they're saying less than, you know, no more than 10 people getting together. So obviously, this is something serious, and we all know this is something serious. It's not a hoax, and I really think that maybe we should do a shelter in place. Unfortunately, some of these businesses are going to be hurt, we know that. I'm all about economic development, but the faster we're able to curve the curve, curb the curve, I think the better it is, and I think we need to really consider this. This is really a serious matter. It's never happened in our lifetime, and hopefully, it's never going to happen again. My son works up north, he's home for the next three weeks, working from home. Some people are fortunate that they're able to do that, other people are not. We've got waiters, we've got waitresses, we've got people at the grocery stores that are actually working extra hours right now, because we've got people that are hoarding what they shouldn't be hoarding, especially perishables. So I think this is really serious, and I think we should consider it. And unfortunately, for small business owners, and unfortunately, I mean, you know, Supervisor Peter Hernandez, I realize that this is, this would affect you, but you took an oath as a supervisor, and you either need to recuse yourself, or you need to be on board, that I think with the rest of the supervisors, that we need to head something that's going to actually, for the entire community, not just for an individual person as a business person. Also, I'd like to address the, what's going out and putting out on social media. I think that the information needs to come out from one person and not being out there trying to be the first one out there to get the information. This is not political. We are all in this together, and we all need to just rely on the one person. And Supervisor Gilio, I think it's a great idea to hire somebody, a PIO, full-time. It's a great idea. Information will be coming from minimal sources. We either have, there's a, even from Congressman Panetta, I'm running out of time, he gave out who to contact in every county, and that's the public health department. He didn't say, contact your local mayor, he didn't say, contact your local supervisors. It comes from the county health department, because they're the first ones on the line. They've got the boots on the ground. So if we can do something, I don't know what it is that you guys can do as a whole or just peer pressure to tell your local officials, elected officials, stay off social media and get it directly from the source. Thank you.
Thank you. Carrie?
That's hard to follow. Good afternoon. I'm here with Vicky Fortino from United Way, and you know I'm with the Community Foundation. So what we've done today, we've initiated our disaster preparedness fund. I know you're going to talk about finances. We're going to be very concerned about the nonprofits in our community and the services they're providing. We hope that they are able to continue to provide those services. I met with Pauline today at Hoveness. As you know, their meals have shut down, but they are doing Meals on Wheels, and they're increasing that, and they're okay at the moment. Same way with, at the food bank, they are going to continue to serve our community in best, they are looking for volunteers to help them at the moment. So we're going to be setting aside money and gathering money to help the nonprofits. As you noticed already, a huge number of nonprofits have canceled their fundraising events. That's their bread and butter to keep the doors open. So we're very concerned about that. It'll be on our website, and we hope to help in the communication, and we leave all the medical stuff to the medical staff. I mean, we're going to take direction from them. So if there's anything the foundation can do, or United Way, and then just, I know Vicky would be up here too, but 2-1-1. You've already talked about it, you mentioned it earlier, 2-1-1. That is great information, it's up to date, and we need to get that, whatever information you're going to put out, make sure you put 2-1-1 out there. People can call, get active information immediately. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else in the public? None? I'll close it. There are several questions that were asked. Edgar?
Good afternoon, everybody. So I believe the question was from someone in the public saying about direction with some type of training.
Edgar, I want to interrupt you, but there's a lot of folks here and then the public that don't know who you are. Could you introduce yourself and, please, thank you?
Hi, I'm Edgar Nolasco. I'm the deputy county administrator officer for the San Bernardino County, and I believe the question was regarding any type of guidance or direction on contracting or classes as it relates to probation and HHSA. Well, we are providing for employees and directing employees to do online training, if possible. We've purchased Zoom meeting accounts, just like we're doing today. We're using technology as a friend to continue business, business as usual for the county. So we're leaving department heads to make those decisions, what is essential, what is nonessential. Those classes should be continuing, but using alternative measures like technology in order to get the mission done.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay. There was a question asked, to ask those members of the city council, the shelter in place, is that an official position of the City of Hollister? Would the Mayor Hollister answer that question?
I'm sorry, could not hear it clearly?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah. You want to restate the question, Tulsa?
Yeah. So the question was, is the shelter in place an official City of Hollister statement? Or...
As the chair of the disaster council, I recommend the shelter in place. We are working on it in the city to follow the guidelines from the other counties and the area that are doing it, and that's what I have put out there as the route that we will follow.
Supervisor Patel?
Yeah, I have a question to that, because my understanding is that the public health officer is the authority that can do that. And, you know, I'm really concerned about the ramifications of such an action as far as the community knowing what that definition really is, because, you know, of course, essential businesses are exempt from it, but what is essential businesses? In my definition, it's not only public safety officers, public health officers, but it's also food production, farmers. That's essential businesses. We've got to keep growing food, supplying our supermarkets, as we can see the shelves are empty today, and the guys that deliver those products. And I think before we kind of throw these things out there, we better know damn sure what we're talking about. And that's why it's so important to follow our health officials with their recommendations, and then we do stuff like that.
This is Mayor Velasquez again, do you have a quick comment or reply? You know, we're going to follow what our partners are doing in the Bay Area and what is happening across the country. I can't commend Governor from New York enough for his brave stance today, he sets the path for all of us. We are not reinventing something, we are not creating something. We're going to work with the guidelines of the other communities to make sure we're on the same page.
That's okay.
This is the antibiotics.
It's important for us to make sure that, hang on for a second, everyone. I think it's important to make sure everyone understands, we all understand this will be an economic hit, but we need to be clear on what that hit would look like, because we don't do something and it spreads. So we need to move first for the public safety and not just think about it from economics. I'm losing mine, I'm sure we all are, but that's part of what we have to do to get through this, is make sure we do it right. Thank you.
Any comments, questions?
Yes, sir.
Supervisor Gilio?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Jim Gilio, Board of Supervisors, District Four. I'd like to have our county health, we don't have our officer here, but we have Tracy Belton's here. Can you address the question, who can order a shelter in place? Can individual cities order a shelter in place as a board? As, for example, let's say the City of Hollister would like to issue a shelter in place, but San Juan doesn't, or, just hypothetically, who can issue that? Is it the health officer? Is it individual boards? Is it the board of supervisor? Can you clarify that for the community?
That's, that's an excellent question, and I think county council is actually researching that as we speak. We've talked about this prior to the meeting. The seven Bay Area counties was, were the health officers that issued the shelter in place, so we're looking at that now. We're not clear, we believe it is a health officer order, but we are still researching that. Our health officer is also looking into it, and has been in contact with his fellow health officers, and so hopefully, we'll have more to follow after this meeting.
City Attorney, or County Attorney, do you mind commenting?
Okay, so I'll answer it partially. The order that was done by the other six counties, we found out about it this morning, it was done by the local health officers for those counties. We also, as the local health, the county health officer also serves as the local health officer for the cities as well. So those cities could consult with the local health officer to have either the same or different health orders that pertain to their specific jurisdictions, but it depends on the discretion of the local health officer. When our local, when our local health officer on behalf of the county issues this order, it's enforceable by the sheriff. And so we haven't opined about the, we haven't opined about the enforceability of the order that's been issued by the city, or the status of that.
Great, thank you. And that's going to be a huge concern if we do go down this route. When we get there is, how do we enforce it? Who enforces it? We have two or three deputies on the street that can't keep up with the calls for service now, so it's, that's another concern that we need to consider if we do make this decision.
Actually, hold on, Supervisor Medina, that's an item, just want to address the board and fellow councilmembers, both from San Juan Batista and Hazel Hawkins Board of Trustees, that I'm going to ask the board that we go into closed session after the conclusion of this, to discuss some of those subject matters that we're discussing today, just cautions the board and the council members of, how long the conversation can continue? Hold on, how long the conversation can continue, and I will say, that's, will be closed session material, but for now, it's okay, we can talk about it.
Supervisor Medina? Just two quick questions. The first one is, maybe this is an assumption, but I'm assuming the mayor did talk to the county health?
Hello, say hi, this is Councilmember Rosales.
Hold on, hold on, Mr. Rosales. I will address you when Supervisor Medina concludes his question.
Ma'am, Tracy? Did, I assume that the mayor did contact you before posting this on Facebook and...
No.
Oh, okay.
I had no conversations with him.
Oh, so you didn't?
Go ahead, Supervisor Medina?
No, that was it. I thought maybe he had some conversations with her, because that would be the way to go, is...
You mean with Tracy or the health department?
Yes.
Thank you. Councilmember Rosales, you got a question or comment?
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair. Again, I just want to make sure that we keep focused on what we're here to talk about. I really appreciate everyone getting together, coming together for a unified message. As far as politicizing the issue, I really appreciate that we're not going to do that. I would imagine that you're going to go into closed session. Thank you for your leadership on that, Mr. Chair, and I would imagine that we're going to do the same thing to discuss all the details, and I look forward to relaying that to your board and to the rest of the parties here. So we will be addressing that at our next meeting, probably right after this. Thank you so much.
Mr. Chair, if I may?
Yes, Supervisor Peter Hernandez?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. So I agree with the mayor and with everybody in the room that flattening the curve is a goal, that if this is what needs to happen. I think the question isn't so much about whether to do this or not, I think, and this is my assumption, right, obviously, you haven't done, we haven't had a vote on this, but for the most part, flattening the curve is really important, that's the goal, all that being considered, setting expectations is the biggest question, and I think that's where this confusion is out there, is, you know, when something happens... You know, when something happens and you, then ultimately, the implications of something like doing a shelter, it's all under the assumption of a certain directions that are going to follow, understanding and educating the public. I mean, ultimately, if we're going to implement this shelter and basically shutting down businesses, businesses themselves need to know what this even means. Otherwise, it's one thing to say we're going to do it. It's another thing for the business to actually respond accordingly. Because if they don't understand, then there's going to be tons of people getting flooded with questions. So, I would recommend definitely considering what it means to create actually healthy expectations so that the response is consistent. Otherwise, you know, we're basically just working against ourselves to put out a statement to say we're doing a shelter, but no one understands. Those are my comments, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Thank you Supervisor Hernandez. Any other questions or any other elected officials?
May I make one comment, Mr. Chair?
Hold on Supervisor Gillio. Any other questions? Supervisor Gillio?
Yeah, quickly, I was contacted by one business owner today and it was actually via email. And I won't give their name, but they may want to comment on it later. But it was, it was interesting and I just want to bring this up for the economy. So, they said that the trouble they were having, and it's a food service type business, the trouble they were having with this in-between land, being in-between shutdown and not shut down. I guess there's insurance policies that can cover this. So, he was actually, believe it or not, lobbying for a complete shutdown so that he could activate his insurance policy. And then I believe that there's benefits that become available for the employees instead of half-working and half-not-working. So, just, just another thought I wanted to add to the conversation because I had not thought of that perspective, actually. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm actually going to ask the health department to come up, I'm going to ask them a question. You might, you guys might call me as a bad evil person on this one, but I'm going to put my faith in the right answer on this one. When you guys, when the health department, sorry, when the health department makes determinations on what to implement next? In that equation, when you reach a conclusion, are there parameters to take into consideration what is the economic effect on a policy?
Well, we have all these disaster plans and we have exercises that we do. And frankly, we, we think first about the public's health. These are very difficult decisions to make. And I want to tell you that I got a phone call this morning from the health officer that said, okay, this is confidential. It's no longer confidential, but the Bay Area health officers have been planning to issue this order in the six or seven Bay Area counties. And I said, well, okay. And he said, I did not know about it. And I, and I think that we need to have a conversation with Santa Cruz County and with Monterey County as well because we have a large commuter population that goes in and out of Santa Clara County. And, and Santa Cruz County also has a commuter population. And Santa Cruz County is now moving into a, a more moderate spread community. They have seven to 10 cases, I believe. And so, we arranged for this conference call and our concern was that we wanted, number one, to protect the public and have a unified message. And it's just been a very, you know, fast-moving situation. And we're thinking about all the economic impact, the unintended consequences of people and children being home and in the community. And this is not a decision at this point, I think, that we want to make alone. You know, we want to work together with the board, with the community, with the other boards and councils. This is not a decision that we want to make alone. Dr. Marty is ready to have a conversation with us in closed session. And we do consider the unintended consequences of this. But of course, as health professionals, our first duty is to protect the public's health.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Okay. All right. Okay, next, now that we heard from the elected officials, so it seems like the consensus is all about having a unified message and working together. So, my question to my fellow elected official is, what is the first step that we need to do to go in that direction?
We can either discuss it in closed session if you'd like, or I'm prepared to make a motion to hire a temporary CIO, PIO. We can discuss salary ranges and that sort of thing in public. And then, I'm sorry, in private session. And then I'm also prepared to discuss emergency funds, making them available for supplies. And those are the two things that I think we can deal with now, or we can deal with in a closed session. Your choice.
A second.
Thank you. One other, let me finish my thought real quick. One other second. If we do, it sounds like there may be a desire and some, some thoughts about exploring this shelter in place, temporary shelter in place. We need to be super clear with that message, super clear. Because even the shelter in place in Santa Clara County with a lot of guidance is not clear. People don't know if they have, their business is essential. There's too many questions. There's too many open-ended scenarios. So, if that, we are going that route and there is the consensus from our experts that advise that, we need to get this person in place, whoever is going to handle this unified messaging. And then we need to have a super clear message. And we all, as elected officials, talking to everybody that's listening or hearing this later, as elected officials, please stick with the unified message, share the unified message and don't share your own message. This isn't political. This isn't about being first and getting out in front of the message. Just, just share what the, what the group has decided here. We've all agreed on, here at this meeting publicly, that we're going to have a unified, shared message. So, please stick with that. And if you don't, please expect to be held accountable by myself and other elected officials and also our community members.
So, you second the entire?
Yeah, I agree with number one and number two. I'd like to second the motion of a PIO and also some emergency supplies. On number three?
Hold on Barbara.
Funds, emergency funds for supplies.
Yes, for supplies, sorry.
Go ahead Supervisor Medina.
And then on number three, I think what we need to do is, we need to really think about how we go into this when it comes to stay in, what is it, stay in?
Shelter in place.
Shelter in place. We really have to sit down and talk about it. I'm going to take the next couple of days off and support staff any way I can, drafting the rules, the regulations, making it crystal clear and using that public information officer as our vehicle to disseminate the information.
Okay, thank you. So, I got, I got a motion and a second. Is that, was that your, those three items were the intent of your motion?
Yes, sir. And we can, with your, just to clarify the motion, we'd approve it out here so the public knows where we're headed and what we're doing. And then we could discuss amounts in closed session because it's a, it's a negotiations issue with salary, etc.
I understand, yeah. Okay, so, just for?
Hold on, that looks like Barbara wants to make a comment. County council?
I'm sorry.
Want to make sure we're doing this right. This is a moving situation.
Were you going to make a specific amount for those emergency funds? Or basically, the CAO already has the authority?
Okay, yeah, my, my staff, my thought was to delegate that to staff and then also have a, if you needed to, a conversation in closed session because it's money. But it's totally up to you guys.
Yeah, but we won't address the money in closed session.
Okay. Well, let me, let me clarify my motion, please. I'll make one motion and then I'll skip, let me remove the two off the table. Let's separate it, make it clear. One motion to allow the CIO?
Hold on Supervisor Gillio. I have a motion and a second and that supersedes anything else. Would the maker of second rescind their second?
I rescind my second.
Thank you. If there's no motion on the tables, you may speak now.
Thank you. So, to clarify, let's just, let's keep it simple. I thought we were going to have the discussion in closed session, my apologies. Motion number one. Emergency funds for, to help our cities, to help our county employees and to help our community members designate the authority of the CAO to act, to spend emergency funds up to $1 million. That's it. That's my motion, plain and simple.
Is there a second?
A second.
Okay. Discussion? So, this is a million dollars because it's not during the budget, it requires forfeits vote, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Also, question. Would, would, would you, are you going to request that Ray comes back to the board and how he's going to spend the money, how he's going to work with the city Hollister?
Absolutely. That's going to be a very fluid conversation, Mr. Chair. This is just given in the authorization to get going because what we've learned is that things like, essential things like hand sanitizer, PPE stuff, all these items are very difficult to get. And if we don't move now and act now, it's going to be more difficult next week and then way more difficult the week after. So, we need to start getting that stuff prepared, get it now. So, we have some supply for our team members that are working in essential jobs, if they're still working, number one. Number two, our cities that are working in these essential jobs. And number three, our community.
Okay. There's a motion and a second, it's all cleared. Because the council members were invited, I will allow for discussion, comments and questions from the city council members? City of San Juan Batista?
Is this, are the cities invited into this discussion on?
Closed session? That's another thing that we're going to talk after we're done with this motion. Okay. Anyone from the, anyone from the city Hollister? None? Lenora?
I concur with Gillio's motion. I think that makes a lot of sense.
Okay, thank you. All right. I'm going to go for a vote, a roll call.
So, am I doing everyone?
No, just supervisors.
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
Gillio?
Yes.
And then you have Supervisor Hernandez?
Hernandez?
Yes.
Okay. It passes 5-0. Okay, next thing. All right, shelter in place. How does the group want to talk about this? Supervisor Mattello?
Well, you know, I?
I have one more, one more motion because we separated the two items.
You got it right. That's correct.
Second item is to approve the CAO to hire a temporary PIO for a period to include from now until 12/31/2020. So, at the end of this year and salary to be discussed in closed session.
We won't be discussing the salary, I don't think, in closed session. You can just give direction to hire.
Okay. Direction to hire, it's a new position, so I don't know if we need to have that discussion.
He can.
You'll come back and deal with it.
He can contract.
Okay. To contract until the end of the year. Is that clear?
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion?
Yes. So, will the PIO also serve the City of Hollister jurisdiction?
That is my, my recommendation. I'm not the boss of the whole area, but my thought, my thought is that it's somebody that can help our health department. I know they have a PIO, but their PIO is running around just trying to get out their own message. I'd like this person to be able to coordinate between all of the agencies that we have been talking with today and provide a unified message that then we can all amplify and share.
Thank you Supervisor Gillio.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. You come up to the podium in reference to the PIO?
Good afternoon, sir. My name is Joseph DeSilva. It concerns me that you're not, that I hear that you're all spending a million dollars to protect the city employees and hoarding more of the necessities that our community need, particularly the citizens, senior citizens of this community. People are fighting online right now for hand sanitizers, toilet paper and all of that. And it seems like you're spending my tax money on a million dollars just to protect the employees of this city. And I find that unbelievable. How could, how could you, in good faith, spend a million dollars and not have any consideration for the senior citizens and the citizens of this community? What are you going to do about it to make sure that there is some stuff in the store shelves so that we can have? Earlier today, I went to get water, I couldn't even get water. I did not even sure that if we can drink the water from the faucet. I believe, Lenora? Yes, you can. I'm sure at the city hall, you have water bottle for all of you. And I should drink water that is murky and leaves the toilets, you know, brown, you know, that I need to use Clorox regularly to clean it? You think that I should feed that to my children? Please, ladies and gentlemen, this is not fair. Think about the community first. If you're going to hoard, and I heard you say, oh, in a week or two, we might not have sanitizers for ourselves. How about the public?
Sir, this, this, I'm the maker. You know what, I'm going to, Mr. Chair, with all due respect, I'm going to respond briefly. The, I made the motion, it includes the community, sir. We're going to have, we're trying to, we're trying to get supplies that we can help our most vulnerable people as well.
Could you kindly get?
Supervisor Gillio, please address the board, sir.
Could you kindly have at least water that is ample supply in tankers or whatever you need to serve the community? Water world is closed. You go to any water machine in town, they don't have water. I see people with bottles and being returned away from those machines. We come with hard-earned money to pay and we cannot even get water. What are you going to do about that? At least provide the essential for the citizens. I think we're going to, this is a pandemic that I think is a little overblown and I think that we should be concerned. But all of this is not warranted, sir. And I would hope that, you know, that you try to calm the citizens of this community, that we are not going to have what's happening in other places. People are going to begin to break in homes to take away from the hoarders.
Thank you, sir.
And I, I would hope that you?
Thank you.
Pay attention to it.
Thank you. Thank you for your input. Thank you. Anyone else in the public? None, I'll close it. Supervisor Gillio, you like to respond?
I just want to be, to be clear that these, these funds that we're approving and talking about, number one, it's up to a million, it's not a million, it could be. We're talking about being able to provide the exact items that this gentleman was talking about for our community as well, for the people that are unable to receive this, for our most needy people, for our shut-in people. If we're going to have shelter in place, we've got to have the funds to support the people that are sheltered. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Supervisor Medina, you, you made the second on the second motion, correct?
I just want to say one thing. I do want to give kudos where they're due and I do give kudos to the Mr. Mayor there. He did put a, some type of ordinance into effect where people go into stores, correct me if I'm wrong, council members, could buy two cases of water and one toilet paper, up to 36 rolls or 48 rolls. So, he is our mayor, City of Hollister, which has most of the supermarkets. He is looking out on behalf of you, sir, and the community.
Thank you, sir. You're the supervisor of my district.
Price gouging.
Thank you.
Oh, and also including price gouging. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, there's a motion on the table. All who are in favor say aye.
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 Against, motion carries. Okay, good. All right.
You know, you mentioned, Mr. Chair, and that you want to discuss the shelter in place a little bit further.
Yes, yes, yes.
Benefit of public. I think we have to allow our health officials the latitude to come back to our boards and to the councils at the appropriate time that they feel that we need to do something like this. And hopefully, by, with that would be the definition of what shelter in place truly means. This is a new term for me in any emergency. So, I kind of want to know what the ramifications are and what essential services mean. I think it's not only in the public sector, it's also in the private sector. There's a lot of essential services coming from the private sector. And, you know, being part of it, I'm in agriculture. It's not just about economics, it's about supply chain. And that's essential for the security of our country.
And my, my comments to this is that I understand Supervisor Gillio's reasons why the motion of a million dollars and creating temporary PIO, as a public information officer up to the end of the year. I think the reason why this was brought up because the mayor and myself have been consistently rail, rail-blocked from getting information in which we can share the public. And I hope this can mitigate some of those conditions. But I just asked the department, I just asked the health department a straight question and that was, do you take economics into consideration? And the response was, not really, because it's about health. And I hope that that's really the whole intent. Because in the near future, we're going to have economic business and small businesses and shops and bars all going to say, well, you guys just issued this, now we're going to close. Who's going to pay for that? And so, what we just did today, approving a million dollars, right? We're going to have to come back and maybe increase it to $2 million down the road. And that's why it was very important that we discussed this in closed session before we got into this motion. But? But it is what it is. We're going to continue to move forward, and I hope it, it's, we, just like Elia said, is we bring that curve down. That's the most important thing, that we work together to bring that curve down. Okay.
Mr. Chair, briefly, and I won't say anything after this. I'll try not to apologize. So, critical to understand here, we just approved a million dollars. Critical to understand that we've also declared a state of emergency as well as of all our cities. I'm not sure if San Juan has, but I highly recommend it. The reason why, for many reasons, is we get reimbursed by the state. So when we spend this money, and it's justifiedly spent to combat the coronavirus or support people, we will get reimbursed that, those funds. And that's why we did that. And that's why they have the EOC, and they have finances up and going in the EOC as well. So just, just remember that, please.
I hope, I hope you too. I hope so. Okay. Comments, questions from the City of San Juan, City of Hollister?
What'd you ask for?
Comments, input?
Just a little comment, please, on reflection of the water issue. I want to assure the citizens of Hollister and the greater San Benito County that we have very good water right now. It exceeds the minimum requirements of water standards. We have two water treatment plants, something this county has never had. The one on Sunny Slope and the one on Union Road. Please, the water is very drinkable, and it doesn't taste like chlorine anymore. And if it's cloudy, just run your tap water a little longer, and you'll see that it will clear up. Sometimes you have sediment in the pipes, but the water has never been better in the City of Hollister. I will drink the water out of the tap. Thank you very much.
Thank you. City of San Juan Batista? None? Hazel Hawkins Ward Trustees? None? Anyone from the school? Yes, madam? Yes, madam.
You know, I was trying to get my phone off the menu, and he went on to yell. But, you know, one of the problems that I'm having right now is trying to hear everyone. There's a lot of backbeat and back noise from somebody that hasn't used their phone. And I think that before we have another one of these meetings, we should have some sort of, I don't know, etiquette on the conference call or something like that, because it's been very difficult for me to listen. There's been a lot of noise.
Mr. Chair, if I may?
Agreed. Yes, we heard, madam.
Yeah, so, Mr. Chair, if I may, I just wanted to inform the public as well as the boards and councils. This is the first time we've ever done this. We've had an executive order from the governor that allows us some more flexibility with meeting, meeting attendance. So we were, you know, really pushing hard to get this meeting done. We put in a telephone conference call number without really fully testing this Zoom system that we have currently, which I think seemed to work pretty well. So I think in the future, we're going to just do, use Zoom and not have any more telephone conference call numbers. But, you know, I appreciate everybody bearing with us, with this, because this was the first time we've done this.
And I have another question. When we were, when there was a motion on the floor, I don't know, was I supposed to vote? Because I didn't.
No, no, madam.
Okay, so it just began. And then there's going to be a closed session, I understand?
Correct, just the board of supervisors.
That it would be just about the supervisors?
Correct.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Medina? Okay, all right. Do we want to continue discussion on the, oh, God, I forgot the phrase. Shelter in place? We're okay? We're okay? No, just for elected officials, are we okay right now?
I know what a shelter in place is and what it means. So I'm not good with, I, what I would like to know is if the whole committee, disaster committee for the City of Hollister is on board with the shelter in place, which I will ask tonight.
Yeah, that's, you guys' prerogative.
I think on that honor, if I may, just offer a suggestion. I, I'm excited to hear, because I believe we're going to be talking with our actual doctor or MD health officer in closed session, and I'm excited to hear their opinion, because that's what I'm going to rely on, is their opinion. And as soon as we hear that and get that, and it's able to be public, we'll make sure that we get that to you guys. I think that's fair, correct?
Yep.
We'll get it to you as well, yeah.
Yeah, I think a good point. We'll definitely...
What time tomorrow, ma'am?
3 o'clock. Okay. Now, I'm asking for if the board wishes to go into closed session to discuss further Corona 19 issues? Is there a motion on the table?
I'm sorry, if you, as far as going into closed session, the motion is that it came to the attention of the board after the posting of the agenda. It cannot reasonably wait until the next scheduled meeting.
Correct. I will, I will give you an opportunity to talk, but this has to happen first. Is there, is there a motion on the table?
Yeah, I'm prepared. As long as we allow the community to speak, anybody else as well. Thanks. Yes.
Is there a second? All those in favor say aye? Against, then it will be, thank you, Supervisor, it will be, it will be on closed session. Okay, public comment? I got you. Yes, sir.
Hi, Beacons, Hollister mayors. I just want to make sure that when you do the shelter in place, that somebody is communicating with the Department of Rehabilitation. We have the social services, vocational services, and HOPE services still attending, because nobody thought to tell them that there is no session. And so they need to get directive from the Public Information Officer, the, the public health. And since we don't have one really on board, somebody needs to communicate with them, because they're holding session today. And by law, they can't close their door until somebody instructs them to do so. So can we kind of keep them in mind? We have the school district here. We have City of Hollister, San Juan. We have the county, but they have been forgotten. I am a teacher for Galvin College, and we have been told, we have been directed by the chancellor. So I know what we need to do, but we have two entities that are providing a public service here in our county, in our city, and no one has considered to address them or direct them what to do. So please keep that in mind when you go into closed session. Somebody needs to dictate that those services need to be suspended as well.
Consider that done. CIO, take care of it.
Thank you. Next person?
Yes, I'm Steve Kane. I'm a trustee with the Hollister Elementary School District. I would, we were, when I say we, I'm talking about all of the school districts in San Benito County were informed Friday afternoon on this outbreak. And I want to commend everybody that was involved, all the school districts, including the superintendent of the county, to be able to, we're talking about 10,000 children here, to be able to shut down the schools over a weekend. I don't know if everybody fully appreciates what was involved in that. It took an awful lot of work by superintendents and a lot of other people that work for the school districts to be able to do this in an orderly fashion, and school was not commenced today. So I just want to put that out there in the public record. It was, it was a tremendous job, and I'm very proud of everybody involved in that.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Okay, anyone else in the public? None? Okay, before we go to closed session, would Captain Taylor join us in closed session, please? Okay, we will now go to closed session.
Yes. And just so we know, we're meeting under 95, 54957, 957, Threat to Public Services, and we're also meeting with Tracy Belton from Health and Human Services.
Mr. Chair, I'm going to recommend that we meet in here and clear this room, because there's no way we can social distance in there, and I've already seen people coughing, so.
Thank you.
Hey, Ray, we're going to meet in here. We're going to clear this room.